Call the meeting to order. For those willing and able, please stand in their seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will do number three approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion.
Oh, sorry.
Second. Katie and Amy.
We're trying to get moving. Just kidding.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to visitors. Any visitors, Deb?
No.
No visitors. Move on to five consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Randy?
Second.
And Katie? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I would just like to thank the Arrow Wrestling Club for the donation of nineteen hundred point five dollars for wrestling mats. So with that, do I have, all those in favor of approving consent agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to administrative reports. Six one one, Jackie, review of budget year-to-date.
Budget year-to-date, it looks good. We're at thirty-four percent. Last year at this time, we're at thirty-three percent.
Any questions? Nothing looks out of the ordinary to you with all the budget adjustments that you think you've got to make, or?
There are, will be some budget amendments eventually.
No.
Not not anything. Like, for instance, we got some more health and safety, not health and safety money.
Safe schools.
Safe schools money that I had no idea we were going to get last June when I did the budget.
No.
And like, the teachers have settled now, so I haven't gone back to look, you know, where we're at there. I've been trying to finish up nineteen.
Yes.
Then I can start working on twenty-one in January, so sometime I'm going to get to the year I'm supposed to be at.
Well, I'm glad you're on top of it.
Yeah, no kidding.
Two years at a time.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jackie? Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to six point one point four. Melanie?
I will speak on down in new business.
Okay, then we will move on to six point two, school board members. Does anybody have anything to say?
I thought that the strategic planning meeting went well. I thought there was good participation and a lot of good discussion.
Yep, and it was great to see the amount of public.
I agree.
And having students there was great.
When I just thought, yeah, a lot of different sectors, teachers, community members, students. I thought that was really good, and I thought we did have a lot of good discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Start over, we'll solve it once you're back over.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was good.
True.
I think they wanted to be wrapped up at the latest by nine, and we didn't get out of there till?
Nine thirty, nine thirty, yeah.
So, good presentation.
Yeah, it was good.
Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to six three, superintendent.
Enrollment, again, we were at a?
I see that.
All-time low last month, and we are actually now above where we started in September, so we're at our highest?
I know, I saw, it's crazy.
Point of eleven thirty-two right now, which is really kind of in line with where we were thinking we were going to be, so. Yeah, I, I was kind of shocked when we had, I think, last week of twelve new students came in, so that's.
Are they mainly coming into elementary or the high school, or is it just everything?
All over.
Really?
Well, part of that too, I don't know if everybody's heard, with J and B, now that JBS Swift?
Yeah.
Is going to purchase J and B, so, and they want to keep all employees. And so that, you know, we mentioned that for the last meeting, that that would be a concern. Well, it sounds like that turned out pretty well.
Yeah, I heard that too.
I had heard that, that's true.
It is.
Last week.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna do pork product out of the plant, so.
That's great. I'd heard some rumbling, but I hadn't heard anything specific though, but.
Yeah.
They made pork, they said.
All pork.
All pork, yeah. I was going to say, I forgot.
Are you sorry, Jackie?
Yeah.
You're not sorry.
It would have been a positive.
So that was very favorable for the community.
It is, very, it is, it was a good, it is good to hear that.
So, enrollment is back in a place where we want to see it, so that's good. Construction should be, the bids are supposed to be going out here, I believe, this week. There is a pre-bid meeting on December fifth at ten thirty. If anybody wants to be here, that's an opportunity for anybody who wants to bid on anything in the project. They can come in and ask questions of Kraus Anderson and ISG. I think we're going to try to do it in this room here. On December nineteenth is the bid opening, and that will be done in the auditorium. I believe that is going to be like one o'clock in the afternoon or something, so. Nineteenth of December.
How does that normally work with the bid? Will it be one company bid everything and then sub it out, or will it be?
I think they do it in as many bid packages as they can, but you might have one contractor bid multiple packages, so they could get a lot. And I don't know if they sub all the lot or not, but.
They're wanting to know who's in the area that Kraus Anderson is very interested, so that, you know, there could be anybody who's a capable local that probably can't bid, but it sounds like there's going to be a lot of subcontracting that they're anticipating, so that'll be good. I did talk to them again about this. They feel good about the timing of when we're going out here, so hopefully that.
So the opening is when?
Nineteenth of December.
Wow.
That's what they've told me, so unless I'm.
Happens fast then. Two week, two week time? Ten days?
Well, they're going out this week.
Okay.
You know, so it's, you've got.
But they can ask questions on the fifth?
That's a day for clarifications, if there's anything that they need clarification on or want to know about.
Was it in the paper, wasn't it? I've seen it in the paper.
They've started advertising, so that.
So it's out.
They started getting the word out there.
It's on our website.
Okay, yeah, I just noticed it in the paper.
Any conference I go to, everybody seems to know that we have a bond.
All the vendors?
Yes. All of them.
So will it treated well when we go?
Yes, you will.
Everybody will be happy in January.
Board founders will be a good one.
People will be chasing us down.
We're all here P A S.
But both of, any of those, again, you know, you don't have to be there, but if you just want to come and see, I'll definitely keep you updated. And then on January sixth is our organizational meeting, reorganizational meeting, to start the new year. We will have a special meeting following the organizational meeting, because then we're going to have to review the bids and accept the bids.
What time's that meeting at?
The organizational meeting, I believe, is seven o'clock, so. That usually takes us about thirty minutes to get through that, so then we'll go through the bids and accept. I figure we just close that meeting and then open up a new one and just do it that way, have a special meeting.
So the December fifth one, what time is that, Kevin?
Ten thirty a.m.
And the fifteenth? Nineteenth at ten a.m.?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
Let me look.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
So do you have? That's what I have?
You have two or three thirty on your calendar.
On the nineteenth.
Okay.
So then, like I said, January sixth is the next phase worth of work. We'll go through those and look at, and if there's any decisions that need to be made, that would be the time to be taking care of all of that. And then I was just at M R E A, the conference here last weekend, another really good conference. They continue to advocate for rural schools, and they do a really good job of speaking for rural, rural education. So always good to go there to their conference. Had a team of, there were four of us, Melanie and Tony and Joanne Elbersen with it, and myself attended the conference. Theme was relationships and all of those types of things. Some good things that we took away from that, so. So that was a good conference. Okay? Okay, that's all I got, I guess.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, move on to seven, old business. Seven point one, second reading of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty paraprofessional seniority list. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad, any discussion?
Just, I'll just, on all three, they were posted here. We did have one clarification, I believe, in the teachers.
The first reading.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Otherwise, no, it's so.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the paraprofessional seniority list signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Seven two, second reading of the two thousand nineteen, twenty secretary custodian AP seniority list. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brad, I'll second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the two thousand nineteen, twenty secretary custodian AP seniority list signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Seven three, second reading of the two thousand nineteen, twenty teacher seniority list. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie?
Second.
And Brad, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to eight, new business. Eight one, approved payment of high school activity bills for November two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Randy, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approved payment of high school activity bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight two, approved payment of regular monthly bills for November of two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approved payment of regular monthly bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight three, approved treasurer's report for October of two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
And Brad, is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve treasurer's report for two thousand nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Eight four, approved treasurer's report for October two thousand nineteen for elementary building bond fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Is any of that left yet? Me and I, have we been paying out of that for any, out of the elementary?
Yeah, if you look at that net cash activity on the top of that, that's five hundred and three thousand, that's what I've drawn out of there.
Okay.
And actually, since this time, I've drawn out another, this is a big old guess, maybe three hundred thousand.
Where's most of that going? Architect, okay.
They're doing a lot, that's where, they're doing a lot of the planning, the drawings, and so that's where most of the bills are going.
There was box man, eleven thousand, I don't know if you remember when we signed something at a board meeting where some of those cost that we inferred prior to the bond issue, we could also run those through the bond.
Oh, yes.
Right, 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 right.
Reimbursement of ourselves?
Yes.
Now, this is the elementary. Do we have the security? Is there one out there for the security?
That's all in.
That's in this number?
Yeah, everything in for the security.
Well, redoing the entrance or a secure entrance?
This is all.
This is everything? Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the treasurer's report for the new elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight five, adopt the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget planning timeline. Evan?
Yes, each year I put together kind of a timeline of what we need to do with preparing our twenty twenty-one budget. You heard Jackie earlier saying that we're doing the audit of eighteen nineteen. We're in nineteen twenty, and here we are planning for twenty twenty-one, so we're working in various years. We are looking, next month we will wrap up the audit and kind of put eighteen nineteen away, but we do need to start looking at twenty twenty-one. And the reason why we plan this out, and why I put this timeline together is that if we are making work reductions or any of those things, there are some statutory requirements for timelines. If you were to lay off a tenure teacher, for example, we have to give them notice by March so that we can take care of those due process timelines. I'm not anticipating any, but I think it's just good habit that we do this. The budget and finance committee will be meeting here in early December to go over the audit, review the fund balance policy, and make recommendations there, and then kind of get it. Because when they do go through the audit, we kind of get an idea of where we want our budget to be for twenty twenty-one, and they give recommendation to the board, and then in December we kind of make those decisions. And then from January to December to February, basically, the administrative team works on staffing, budgets, programs, and all of those things for next year, so that we have all of that done. This is kind of the process we use, and we've got rough dates in here for most of it, but it kind of keeps us on track with everything.
Yep, we need a motion and a second here. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Brad, second?
Second.
Katie? Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the twenty twenty-one budget planning timeline signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to eight point six, approve combined summary of the twenty eighteen, nineteen World's Best Workforce Achievement and Integration Report.
Hi. It's our yearly summary, and it is the summary of last school year. And it is how we progressed in our World's Best Workforce Goals last school year. We have to do this each year. This year's a little different. Rather than me uploading this PDF, I have to submit it question by question in a Google Form type situation. So I will submit exactly what you approve, and that's why I have the document ready, so I can just copy and paste. Each year we have a World's Best Workforce Committee, and we are required to, as we heard in our strategic planning, plan for our five questions in the World's Best Workforce. The first one is that all students are ready for school, and if you're following along, I'm on page sixty-seven. Our goal of ensure children in our communities are ready for kindergarten, and you'll notice that under each goal I have reference for M D E that this is not a SMART goal, because we got docked last year. However, the district is in strategic planning now to create SMART goals for the World's Best Workforce and District Goals. So as we get to that point in that process, that will be very important, because we, right now, our goals don't have a time bound, how we're going to do it, all that. So our result there is that, yes, we're on track for ensuring our children are in, in our communities are ready for kindergarten. We had ninety-one students enrolled in the district's preschool during the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And then I included our classroom engagement model benchmark, self-rating of the benchmark of quality, and we can see that that quality is going up over time. They asked a lot of questions, like, what data are you using? I include all of the data that we have available, and through this discussion, we've discovered that we need to have more precise data to ensure that we are properly measuring if our students are ready for kindergarten. So that's something that we're going to work on for this year. And then when we look at, how do you know whether it is or is not helping you make progress toward your goal? The readiness of students for kindergarten has grown based on skills students have during kindergarten roundup, and our enrollment has maintained at that M D E number. Looking at the second goal of all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy, we are not on track for this goal. Our goal was to implement interventions to ensure each child reads at grade level by third grade. Again, not a SMART goal. Our result, less than, nine less third graders were in the achievement level of meats on the twenty nineteen N C A as compared to twenty eighteen. Percent of not proficient P A S third graders rose from forty-eight percent in twenty eighteen to fifty-four point six in twenty nineteen. Sixty-eight percent of our free and reduced third grade students were not proficient on the twenty nineteen N C A for reading, while sixty percent of our free and reduced third grade students were not proficient in the twenty-eight reading N C A. Our data that we look at this is N C A reading data, data disaggregated by free and reduced and non-free and reduced, as well as sped in ethnicity, our FAST A reading and C B M reading. Strategies, we're in our third year of our implementation of our new reading curriculum in grades K through six. And second year of using FAST to progress monitor students who are at some risk and high risk. And second year of screening students K eight with a dyslexia screener. Reading corps in kindergarten and first grade will work hard to obtain and maintain reading corps staff for grades two through four in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. How are you implementing your strategies? The non-negotiables and negotiables for the reading curriculum have had walkthroughs for fidelity, but no formal monitoring has been conducted. A practice profile is planned to be created during the fall/winter of nineteen twenty school year to enable former, formal fidelity checks to be conducted and reviewed. How do you know whether it is or is not helping you make progress toward your goal? In our kindergarten, you'll be reminded, when we presented our literacy plan, our kindergarten through second grade scores in FAST have had some great growth. So kindergarten FAST and early reading scores are at the highest they have been in many years. At or above level in the fall was fifty-seven percent, winter eighty-two, and spring seventy-seven. First grade rose ten percent points during the spring, above recently recorded scores at seventy-nine percent at or above grade level. The increased proficiency in the lower grades will allow progress to be made with all third graders being proficient in reading. It's kind of all the, the strategies that have been implemented from preschool to kindergarten to first grade. They'll hit third grade eventually, so then they have all their, all the tools that they need to read. That's where we're at with that. Closing the achievement gaps between student groups is our next goal. The goal is to improve N C A math and reading performance at each grade level to the state average. We would work to align curriculum and standards and provide professional development for teachers. As a district, forty-three percent of our students in grades three through eight and ten are not proficient in reading, which was down from forty-nine percent in twenty eighteen. As a district, fifty percent of our free and reduced student group in grades three through eight and ten are not proficient in reading, down from sixty percent in twenty eighteen. As a district, fifty-eight percent of our students in grades three through eight and eleven are not proficient in math, up from fifty-seven percent in twenty eighteen. As a district, sixty-eight percent of our free and reduced student group in grades three through eight and eleven are not proficient in math, down from seventy percent in twenty eighteen. I mark this school as not being on track. It is a continued area of our need of performance. The data we use is N C A and all students and free and reduced students. Strategies are in place, alignment of the Minnesota academic standards in math to the math courses that are taught in grades seven through twelve. District creation in twenty eighteen, nineteen, and reflection and editing of in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty of common course guides and grade level checklist to align to the Minnesota academic standards at each grade level and in each content area. How well are you implementing your strategies? Principal walkthroughs in twenty eighteen indicated improvement of staff posting, discussing, and referring to the standard benchmarks. Students are learning for the day or class period. Course guides and grade level checklist were reviewed by administration, and edits were recommended to staff to be made before the nineteen twenty school year. Slow, forward, progress one step at a time. How do you know whether it is or not, is or is not helping make progress to your goal? Exit tickets from P L Cs during the nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty school years. Staff are discussing the standards and benchmarks as grade levels and content areas, and adjusting lesson timing and instructional strategies. FAST add in math and reading from fall and winter/spring assessments, as well as the N C A twenty twenty data and fidelity of implementation data in the nineteen twenty, nineteen? Start over. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. All students are career and college ready by graduation. Our goal is to ensure students are college or career ready at graduation. Said we are on track for this goal. Sixty-eight percent of our twenty seventeen graduates were enrolled in an institution of higher learning. That's down from seventy-four percent of the twenty sixteen graduates. And a reminder, we have to look back years, because, for example, the twenty nineteen graduation data has not been released yet. So we have to look back years as we are recording this data. Fifty-two percent of our twenty seventeen graduates in the free and reduced student group are enrolled in an institution of higher learning, which was up from forty-four percent in the twenty sixteen graduates. Only five percent of our twenty seventeen graduates were enrolled in developmental education during the first two years of college, which puts P A S significantly, significantly below the statewide percentage of nineteen percent. So nineteen percent statewide of students who graduate and go to a higher level institution require, like, remedial course. That's what that, so our students require less of those remedial courses at a higher rate, only five percent. On the data that we look at here is the Minnesota Report Card college-going data, non-free and reduced versus free and reduced, and the sleds data. Strategies that we have, are in place, we have advanced coursework with colleges, concurrence enrollment, connection with Minnesota West, C E O program during the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, the post-secondary transition plan, Child's Lines, plans for students during graduation and plan for post-secondary. Guidance programming, counselor and testing coordinators, test prep for students who take the A C Ts, and juniors and seniors take the ASVAB. And the career planning opportunities and awareness. We will continue to review data in this area with upcoming strategic plan and bringing all educational buildings to one campus. We are looking ahead to the future as well as we plan for students being career and college ready. How do you know whether it is working or not? While sixty-eight percent of our students are enrolling in college of some sort, we are aware that our students require significantly less remediation in college. And our final goal of all students graduate, I mark this as not being on track. We strive for one hundred percent graduation. In twenty eighteen, seventy-six point two percent, which was forty-eight students graduated. Of those forty-eight graduates, sixty-six point seven or twenty-six were of the free and reduced student group. The data we use for that is the Minnesota Report Card graduation data, non-free and reduced versus free and reduced. Again, same strategies with coursework, C E O, transition plan, guidance programming. This area needs to be reviewed into the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, as we are not at the one hundred percent graduation rate. How do you know whether it is or is not? How do you make progress toward this goal? We do not, at this point, we need to review our processes, practices, and strategies in this area and make changes to improve our graduation rate to one hundred percent. So we have some work to do. Are there questions on any of the goal areas? Things that you read in the narrative above or below?
So what are they expecting for more precision on how you do things?
On how we write our goals, so that we actually have, we say what percentage, like, we shoot for a percentage. Okay, so did you meet that percentage? In what timeframe? And how are you going to measure it? So that you have that system already in place wrapped in your goal, so then there's no question as to whether, okay, well, what did we say? How much of a percentage? Because to have a goal is great, but you need to say, well, how great of a goal do you have? You know, what is going to be your percentage of improvement or gap closure? So giving us more precision on. So giving us more precision on, you know, setting that gauge rather than just saying we want this. How, how much of it do we want and when, by when and how are we going to measure it over time? Makes a SMART goal.
Do you think it seems weird that we, we don't, our kids don't need remedial help in college, but we have low test scores across the board? I mean, to me, that seems odd. But when you, and I get that it's a certain, right, population that's probably going on, but still, it seems.
And usually, you know, that, that data comes from four-year institutions through our SLEDs data and you're able to track over time. How, you know, do they enroll? What courses do they take? Are they remedial or not? Yeah, it is, it, it tends to be that oxymoron that you think, well, if we have poor test scores, well, then our students should require more remediation in college. I can't explain that.
But I think part of that, isn't that that, I forget the year that you said with that last, one of the last statements, that only seventy-four percent graduated?
Twenty eighteen, yeah.
So only seventy-four percent graduated. So you got twenty-six percent that didn't. Well, twenty-six percent of your population didn't graduate. How, how hard did that population drag down our averages?
Yeah, true.
And the state tests are based on the MCA standards, which primarily is in grades three through eight. Then this is all based on your high school curriculum, which is geared towards college readiness, so. Your system has got a few dualities in there, so it's hard to always link the two.
Yeah, one doesn't necessarily, you know, lead to another like a domino, so.
Like I said, it isn't under students. It says if they're not reading at proficiency, it doesn't mean they can't read. It's just these standards and are they reading to this level? And that's where we're trying to get that straightened out.
No, I'm, I'm very, very excited to see now the winter FAST scores. You know, we came in at fall, things were looking really nice in those lower grades that we've been following. Okay, now what is second grade going to look like? Okay, now what's third grade going to look like? Being able to gauge, okay, what do we need to do? What supports do we need for staff? What supports do we need for students? And having that reading corps person at Hill this year, like worlds of difference.
I was just going to ask that. Are there any obvious tools that we're missing?
We hadn't had a reading corps person at Hill for any of the years I'd been employed. So we, we'd hire someone and then they, you know, wouldn't show up or, you know, something fell through. So then we were never able to get a person in there. So this is the first school year that we've been able to have a full-time person at Hill for reading corps for grades two, three and four.
Well, and isn't, didn't, isn't this year, didn't we do a math person in that same?
Our math interventionist is in grades three through eight.
This year, first year?
This year, first year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You know, so that will be a gauge as well to see, okay, how does that go? And, you know, are we seeing increased skills even at the winter assessment? And then what are we going to do between the winter and MCA, especially for grades three and four? And then up here? What's that going to look like? So.
Does it work like when you do the MCA's or if kids are absent, do they make them tests up they do?
Yep. I try and have the testing window so that there are plenty of days in between when they test. And then I usually set a time period at each building where myself or one of the instructional coaches is there to help me out to say, okay, during this time period is when we're going to have makeups. And then they come down. As long as we get it all in by the first Friday in May, we're good.
And whoever takes, I mean, it's not like if someone were to leave our district and like, let's say they were, it, it's not a enrollment at a certain time where they all have to take the test. If they're not there, if they don't take the test, that's not in, in the.
If they are, when, when I pull the testing data, that starts in January, so there is a time period that we need them to be here. I try and get any new enrollees in as, I think last year there were maybe two kids that we didn't get in because they had come in like the last two days of the testing window and I'm like, no, we're not going to worry about this. So it does matter when they're here. If they would have, like last year, we had a student who left, who took the reading, but wasn't here for the math. Well, that counted as it does not meet for that math at that point in time. Because he was here in the window.
Right.
So.
So things like that do bring it down quite a bit though.
Yeah, and it, you know, it depends and, you know, we, we are a fortunate district that we do not have to deal with a lot of students who are not, whose parents require them not to take the assessments. There are school districts in our area that three-fourths of their does not meets are because their parents chose to not have them take the test. We only have two in our school district right now. So that. People who are enrolled here who do not take the test during, if they're here during the testing window, whether their parent filled out the form or not, they're still counted as does not meet to the school district. Yeah. So we are very fortunate that our parents, for the most part, you know, see testing as a positive experience. And I mean, last year we had so much assessment with the NAP assessment. We also took the Minnesota Student Survey last year and the MCA. I mean, that's a lot of assessing students in one way, shape or form. And this year we only have the MCA's. You know, so you're like.
In our test data, I mean, it does have all students tested and then those meeting enrollment criteria. So there are some who maybe used to be October one.
Yep.
Is it still?
Not necessarily. They took, with the consistent enrollment part that they've added with ESSA, they've taken the October one date away. So I can't give you that answer right now. If there is a date or if it is just that testing window.
And from my understanding, when, like, there's kids that are ESL, they don't get a Spanish test, right? It's an English, I mean, it's.
For reading, for reading, they are allowed certain accommodations, like they can have a dictionary in their language that is provided online. It can't be like a physical dictionary. And then for math, it's quite different because, you know, reading is assessing their comprehension.
Right.
And math, they can have, it can be translated in their language, like all the questions. Because I can go through and pick which language we want the questions to be translated in and then they're, they're hearing it all. So.
What's the, how does the MTEL fit in?
How about the MTAS? Isn't the MTLE the, what the teachers take?
That was the emerging language or whatever.
That's the access test. And so that test is, that window is before the MCA and that assessment gives us how the student is progressing in their attainment of the English language.
Do they count that in accountability testing at all? So that, sometimes they pull that.
So when I shared with you guys earlier this fall, we had like our MCA score and then we had our access score, the percentage of students who were meeting their goals in their English language acquisition, that counts as well. But that's above and beyond the MCA and all students still have to take the MCA.
Right.
They're enrolled, they have to take it.
Just can't imagine taking a test that you didn't.
I know. I, it's, it's completely frustrating.
Yeah, I'm sure it's frustrating for them too. I mean.
Oh, yes. And, you know, we try and, and help them understand, here's the tools that you're able to use, the resources you're able to use. But sometimes even those tools are too much for them. Like I sit with our EL specialist, Mrs. Wallace and Mrs. Cunningham, we go through the list, every student, which accommodations are going to best serve this student? Which accommodation is going to best serve this student? It is not a blanket because depending upon the level of literacy in their first language, depends on how many accommodations really are going to even be helpful or if it's going to be too much language. Other questions about the World's Best Workforce? Just a caution, next year, this will also include our achievement and integration plan. So it will be the full report. We just have one piece of it now. Because we were eligible for achievement and integration funding, that's how we were able to get our math specialist or math interventionist and that has to be recorded here. I got a little worried and like, do I have to do this this year? Nope, it's for next year, so.
Any further questions?
Yeah, how long that math specialist? How long is that? A three-year deal?
Achievement and integration funding, we have for three years.
Okay.
So this school year, next school year and the following school year.
Was there something similar for the reading or was that just, we just did it?
Reading corps is you, Tony submits for us and if we become eligible for it, then we would get that.
Okay.
So with that math one, did we have to guarantee any time beyond the three years or?
No, but when we look at our, we look at Edgerton's enrollment, we look at our enrollment, eventually we will get our own achievement and integration funding.
Our, my assumption would be is we'll still qualify in three years for another three years. They just weren't going to give you that money for, and then all of a sudden, your students leave and you don't meet the. So you're guaranteeing for three years, which is nice that they don't, you know, one year on and off and when your numbers are so close.
And over that time, each of our goals has key indicators of progress and each of those key indicators of progress has a goal number for the first year, for the second year and for the third year. So we, you know, try to space out our attainment of each of those goals.
And we may change.
Yep.
Math specialist is really to help our teachers incorporate the standards, open their practice and try to do some things. In three years, that should get straightened out pretty well, so then we may be able to go to another interventionist. Maybe it'll be in reading and I, you know, that's, we'll take a look at where things are at.
Where, where are gaps then?
Yeah.
Where are gaps in three years?
Hopefully we.
Don't have any.
Hopefully.
But, yeah, you know, you can hope for the best, but you need to plan for the worst and.
Yeah, and with the way students are in and out, I mean, it's, it's going to be constantly a challenge.
Well, that's, yeah, that's why I think it's crazy.
Any other questions? All the questions, hearing none? Did we have a motion on that one?
No.
Okay. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brad, I'll second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Katie, you do a second?
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned.